All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call February 21st, 2023, Crest Hill City Council Meeting, Carter. If everyone would please stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag, and I would ask that you please remain standing after the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic, what we're just saying, for the nation, for our God, in the end, this is what we're looking at, Christian justice for all. I'm sure as everybody knows, we had two terrible tragedies happen in the world here in the last two weeks since we last met. And I think it deserves a moment of silence. The first one is for all the victims of the terrible tragedy in Turkey and Syria with the earthquake, and then the most recent one they just had a couple days ago. I believe that the death toll now is a little bit over fifty thousand people who have perished. And I'm sure as they continue to clean the debris, there's going to be many more victims that are going to be found. I think they're estimating between seventy and eight thousand at this point in time. So we certainly want to extend our condolences to all of their families. We want to offer our prayers to them. We certainly want to keep in our prayers all of the first responders, the construction workers and everybody else that's working to find bodies under all of their rubble. We pray that we keep them safe too, and all the first responders, nurses, doctors, police officers, firemen, everybody else that's happened in Turkey and Syria. That's just a terrible tragedy for that great amount of loss of life. And also, as everybody's well aware, what happened at Michigan State University last week with the three young lives that were just senselessly taken. Seems like we have a mass shooting every day in this country. And we certainly want to remember them and their prayers. You would think that a school, a classroom would be a safe entity in this world. But I think times have shown that it is not. So we more certainly, again, we'd like to extend our condolences to their families on their tragic loss of their young, young students and sons and daughters, brothers and sisters. So I would ask for a moment of silence for both tragedies. We pray for all of our first responders and everybody that is still continuing to help in Turkey and Syria. Thank you. Roll call, please, Chris.
Ray Solomon. Len Conklin.
Present.
Scott Dyke.
Eric.
Josh A. Darrell Jefferson. Bobby Giselle.
Dan.
Ken Oberlin. Mark Sapiedy.
Here.
Nate Albert. Joe Kuhwal.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I did, I did receive an email from Alderman Albert earlier in the week. He had a prior commitment this evening, but this being a Tuesday night, so he is excused for this meeting. And then I received the text later this afternoon from Alderman Jefferson. He is a little bit under the weather also. So he is excused for this meeting. Moving on to the approval of the minutes, you have before you the minutes of the city council meeting held on February 6th, 2023. Motion would be in order. Second. Motion by Alderman Giselle, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the city council meeting held on minutes held on February 6th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Josh A.
Yes.
Bobby Giselle.
Yes.
Ken Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiedy.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Often period, thank you.
And you have before you the minutes of the work session held on February 13th, 2023. Motion will be in order. Motion by Alderman Giselle, seconded by Alderman B. Rashay for the approval of the city work session minutes held on February 13th, 2023. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Josh A.
Yes.
Bobby Giselle.
Yes.
Ken Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiedy.
Yeah.
Joe Kuhwal.
Interesting.
Often period, thank you.
Okay, and to introduce at this time our business promotion for this evening, we have Mr. Don White here from White Smoke &amp; Ash, which is located at 2301 Plainfield Road in Crest Hill. He has been there since last summer. I will tell you, if you have not been inside there, I had the luxury of being there for the grand opening that was held. The improvements that he made inside that building after the previous business owner that was there and the fire that occurred is tremendous. If you have not been in there and if you do not smoke, I would, I would tell you to please go in there and at least check it out because it is a high-class, first-class building and business that he is operating and is doing a tremendous amount of business there. So I would like to introduce Mr. Don White from White Smoke &amp; Ash for business promotion this evening in the city of Crest Hill. Don.
Thank you, man, and thank you everyone on the council. Good evening to you all. Let me tell you a little bit about who I am before I get into the business part of it. I am a plant manager of Don Manville, right on Route 6. I've been plant manager for two years. I am on the corporate diversity and inclusion team. I just presented on microaggression ally shift to a hundred and sixty leaders of the company just last month. Last March, I presented to a room of three hundred people on diversity and inclusion. We are growing in diversity in my company. The business that we brought to Crest Hill is really surrounded and really based off diversity. We are, last Friday, ninety percent of our customers were of other nationalities besides African-American. We are so proud of what we have done. The reviews, if you have a chance, please Google, Google White Smoke &amp; Ash, read the reviews. People are very proud of this place being in Crest Hill, and you should also be proud of this place in Crest Hill. It is something that people love coming to, want to see it grow, and support it in every way they can. It is, it is truly grown off blood, sweat, and tears. My wife and I have twenty-three years. We are the only ones that financed this. We retired from my job from Warborne Industries after twenty-four years. And we put everything we own, we shook every piggy bank. We, we, we lived under every mattress to get this and bring this and have something special in Crest Hill. December 15th, we had Isaiah Washington come to this place, and he actually promoted his movie, Course of Khan, at this business. It was a huge success. It was, it was very, it was promoted very well, and he was very excited about the business in Crest Hill. Crest Hill, if you look around, Crest Hill doesn't have any cigar lines. I know people do not support a lot of tobacco sales because of how detrimental it is to the body. But this is different. This is more than just a cigar shop, more than just a poker shop. It is a place that people come and it's a melting pot of great people. We have judges there, lawyers there, police there. We have some of the greatest people that died and have created in this world to come to this business. This is a business that will be here for a long time. We are teaching our children the, the business itself. We are looking to expand. We own the name. We own the likeness. We have incorporated and copyrighted all of our white smoke and ash. We own everything. So our goal is to have multiple white smoking ashes and to have this one stay here as the staple. And like I said, if you look at where we fall in your town, it's right on the crest of Crest Hill. You come over to here and you see that sign, and that's something that we're very proud of. I like to thank each and every one of you, especially the law enforcement. We have had zero, zero, zero interaction with the police. We have not had one call, no domestic disturbances, no, anything had to do. Only thing we had in each, each time was twice was, was the parking. And each time, the police, and I thank them, they talk about how great the business has been to them and how easy we make their job. Because again, me managing people, me managing the plant, me working for Burn Shaw, I understand what business, the business is. We accomplish two things, to bring good business here and bring diversity here, and we have done that in six months. Thank you all.
Any questions, Don? Just want to, so sorry. Any, any questions?
Well, I just want to thank you because I love everything you had to say, and I love this, but you have to thank yourself for the fact that there's been no police calls. Because when you run a business, well, that's what happens. So I, I admire you for that, and I thank you for that. Because that falls on you and your wife's shoulders for running a good business.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm welcoming to the city, and I've seen your pictures. I've shared them on the Crest Hill Business Network to support you.
Right.
So thank you for your business and for being a good manager and good owner.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for choosing Crest Hill. Those, in all the years, that building has never looked as good as it does from the outside. You really gave it a place like that, just, you know, really made Route 30 a hundred percent better.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for all your hard work and what you've done there and what you're doing for the community. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for starting a new business in the city of Crest Hill. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it. I hope you get real busy. Have to handle a lot of people. So I'm looking forward to it. Yes, yes.
Well, I want to thank you for running a top-notch business there. I want to congratulate you on your success. You and your wife have experienced with this new business, but it's, it's because you know how to manage people. You, you appreciate what people bring to you, and I'm sure you treat them very well. So that, that's, you know, my hat's off to you. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for investing in Crest Hill.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don, we're proud to have you in the city of Crest Hill. Hopefully, maybe you'll, you'll keep your word on that second building. Maybe it will ever rose somewhere.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
But keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Because you have been a great addition to the city, so I thank you for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Alison.
All right, Darrell's welcome to come back. If you've got any specials on your cigars or anything.
Now, in cities, I'm sorry, so, so the council and, and all of ten percent, so just mention that I told you, and we definitely make sure you, it's down, okay? Thank you.
All right, man, everybody.
All right.
All right, back to the agenda. Our city attorney, Mr. Mike Stiff. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, we're in council. I have one agenda item. For you tonight, you should have in your packet a written resolution, as we discussed with the last work session. All, all signals point to the fact that the mechanical contractor, the HVAC contractor for the city center has closed its doors as mechanical concepts. So as discussed, there is a performance bond. I wrote letters last week upon, following the work session to both the insurance companies, Shorty's and mechanical concepts, notifying them that the city council was considering for the contract, declaring the contract, or declaring a default on the contract and then considering termination. I advised them in that letter that it would be on the agenda tonight for a formal reslate, resolution declaring the default and terminating the contract. It was sent certified mail to both the attorney in fact and Hudson Insurance as well as via FedEx. The FedEx can deliver the Hudson Insurance, the certified mail to the attorney in fact in New York. It was directed to the address on the bond. It came back as undeliverable because it was now a P O box. I'm not so concerned about that because Hudson did get the FedEx package. So before you today is the resolution declaring mechanical concepts of Illinois default on its contract city for the HVAC services and terminating that contract and then authorizing me to make a formal claim on the performance bond.
So moved as presented.
Second. We have motion by all the person, and seconded by all the women's Sapiedy for the to approve a resolution declaring mechanical concepts of Illinois incorporated and default on its contract with the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
So, Lady Giselle.
Yes.
Ken Oberlin.
Yes.
Mark Sapiedy.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Josh A.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution 1165.
Anything else, Mike?
Oh, nothing further other than answering the question.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Jim Moreno. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I have two items for you tonight. The first item is change orders for the city center. On the agenda, we have twenty-two change orders. These were the stuff that we last week at the work session. In the past, we've had a motion and vote on these individually. I would suggest, though, in this case, since we have twenty-two, that if you're willing to do so, we could take one vote after I read all of them off. If there's any in particular, though, that you'd rather vote on separately, those can be voted on separately. We can vote on the rest as one vote if you're willing to do that.
Is that okay, city attorney, Mr. Stiff?
As I suggested, that process in the, in the, with the thought of savings sometimes. So again, if there's any that any council member thinks needs either further discussion or that they are considering voting no on, that they don't want to vote on them as a group, then I think we can just identify those and pull them off and then vote on the rest of them as a group. But otherwise, if there are none that need to be pulled off, Jim can read them off in the amounts, and then he can just do a, a single vote on the rest.
I'm fine with that. Would I vote with you? Go ahead.
You have to vote on that first, do the change.
No, I don't think so. I think that, that go forward as we discuss.
I was, was saying, I'm okay with that because I agree with, and it matches what we had discussed at the work session.
I'm okay with doing it all in one vote. I would just ask that for each item, just a brief description of what the work is to be done for each individual change order, rather than just the, you know, company name and the amount, just a little bit, you know, brief description of what it's for.
Okay, the first one is with CCI touring. This one is actually a credit for seven thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Their contract including ceiling, carpet, flooring, basements, which we determine is not necessary. So that one is a credit. The next one is with path growth construction in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. This is for miscellaneous wall patching throughout the building. Next one is path growth construction for six thousand two hundred dollars. This is for work on door, door hard bar, Wi-Fi locks, exchanging door hardware, electric strikes. And we have another one with path growth construction in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. This is final touch-up paint. That was the one where the stairs were done throughout the building. Path growth construction for three thousand five hundred dollars. It's to repaint the north wall only of city council or the city hall lobby, as we had discussed previously. Another one for path growth construction in the amount of three, thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. This is various repainting throughout the building, drywall patching, nature repatching, repairing stuff, and metal finishes. The next change order is with decursing in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. This is providing Wi-Fi lock sets or doors. And that's all for that one. And low voltage solutions in the amount of zero dollars. This is because they are going to take the microphone bases that you see here at the dais and reuse them and use those for the microphones. We will be reusing these microphones at the new dais in the council chambers. So this is acknowledging their work to be done to relocate these at no charge.
The first change order, of course.
Another one with low voltage solutions in the amount of five thousand forty-two dollars and fifty cents. This is for additional security camera location for the juvenile patrol area of the police department, new wiring, and swapping out existing, existing cameras in the utility area. Another one with low voltage solutions for three thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. This is wiring and tagging car reader access doors. Police department and some areas of the city hall. Another one for low voltage solutions in the amount of three thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Relocating a strobe light in the police station to another location to meet the requirements of the fire department. Low voltage solutions for ten thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. This is cabling work in various rooms throughout the city hall and the police department. Got a change order for Michael Hutchings L L C for seven thousand six hundred and, seven thousand six hundred and forty dollars. This is furnishing and installing the solid surface countertops in the building, base cabinets in police department and in the city clerk's office. Two Veterans Construction Services in the amount of thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars. This is to install rubber stair treads in the stair wells in the building. There's four stairwell, one on the city hall side and two on the police department side. So this is going to be stair treads on stairs, on the risers and the landing. Got a change order with a, 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 a funding for three thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. This is for water line that's needed in the police department. Got a change order with superior labor solution in the amount of two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is to sweep and restring and scrub the basement, the concrete floor. The change order with tech light for nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is adding car readers for the police department, specific doors, software licenses, services, and connections. Another change order with tech light for fourteen thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. This is assets control software licensing, that they need for the door access control software reuse. Next change order is with tin electric in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. This is furnishing, installing a new fee for electrical wiring on a plenty pole on the outside of the building. Change order with weather shield for one thousand seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is to install a caulk and joint filler expansion joints in the Sally, Sally Port Police Station. Change order with warehouse direct for six thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars for pop heaven in the police department. And then we have a change order, another change order with warehouse direct in the amount of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is for signage on the inside of the building, signage in public areas, emergency signage, and signage for officer areas and packages. Should be all.
Motion would be in order.
I've got a question real quick. I'm just hoping, like, with the cost of this art and tree, and a lot of what they're mentioning, a lot of it seems to overlap in, like, mentioning of repairing, patching, repainting, or touch-up paint. I just hope none of this overlap with the charge of oyster on it. I'm just hoping that if that doesn't happen, because there's a lot of the same language and a lot of different ones. So that's my, my concern.
Jim, I have two questions. Do you have some total for all the change orders for tonight?
Yeah.
It's on the memo.
On the second page. One ninety-four, four, four, eight, point five oh.
Yeah, unfortunately, the memo got sorted incorrectly. So. Again, the number, right. Is that the number there?
One ninety-four, four, forty-eight, point five oh. So it's under ninety-four thousand four hundred and forty-eight and fifty cents.
And with that, with that number, what would that bring us? Up close to the seven fifty, approximately seven hundred thousand, seven hundred. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion by all the women's dissolve for approval. Is there a second? I have a motion by all the women's dissolve.
Well, I will second it because we need to get done. I'm not happy with it. I don't like it, but I have a second.
Seconded by all the person Oberlin. Questions or comments?
No, I just have a comment. I had a tour on Friday, and the council chambers looking amazing. Ballroom job, the parven tree, the powder tops. I think mine was there as well. It's very good to see so much improvement, and now that it's approved and it's almost complete, Sean said he will, now they can ask for insurance company. He will apply for
For the claim.
Damage for the claim.
Because he's got all the motion that will find it.
Yeah, so I look forward to see that claim back, but it's, it is looking, I mean, Sean has done an amazing job. And also, just on the record, I want to thank Sean for fixing those cabinets as well. The paint color, everything looks good. It seems like he knows what he's doing. Saw our progress, so I was happy with that. None of us are happy with what's happening, but we have to move on. Sitting there and, and looking at it's not going to help us. It's just, I was happy to see the progress finally, and hopefully we we put this behind us very soon, or I'm gonna say.
Roll call.
Mark Sapiedy.
Yes.
Joe Kuhwal.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Josh A.
Yes.
Bobby Giselle.
Yes.
Ken Oberlin.
Yes.
Often period, thank you.
The next item I have is a resolution participating in the northern Illinois. It is called Electric Collaborative, NYMAC. For many years, the city has participated in this cooperative to purchase electricity. And NYMAC goes out to bid to get the best price. That bid is going to be going out. The bid's, but term contract expires in May. The contract date is March 2nd. So we have to pass a, a resolution to approve that bid when it comes in. We have Adam Hoover here from NYMAC that can speak to this in more detail. Adam, can you come off and just talk through this?
Yeah, thank you for having me. My name's Adam Hoover. You may be familiar with my father, Dave Hoover, has done, has been here before. We help with the municipal aggregation program that you currently have, I think, for another year and a half. And then the other thing we are doing is also the purchasing of a different supplier for your water pumping and street lighting accounts. Both those accounts, but we have thirteen total, nine water pumping accounts, and I think three, twelve total. Streetlight accounts are up for bid this year. And the one thing that we think is special about us is we do a group bid. So we have a bunch of municipalities and all of their accounts. We pull them in together, and we purchase energy, kind of a bulk purchasing system. We think it's a great system that allows for lower rates for everyone involved. The downside is rates and how the way our suppliers work are only good for one day. So that group bid is only good till on March 2nd for, till 5:00 p.m. So we cannot come back to the board and bring it to the board and say, hey, here's a race we have. Our suppliers will pull them for that one. But what we're asking for today, and we've had permission before in the past, but we wanted to ask again, is to have someone here have the signing authority. So when the rates come in on March 2nd, they can choose execute one, two for your deal. And if some, if the rates are not acceptable, you do not have a contract with us, you can move away and not accept any of the bids on that date as well.
We've done this now for under eleven years.
Yes, about there, yeah.
Your dad and yourself now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's worked out very well.
Yes, your current rate rate has been good. Yeah, your current rate is four point four cents. This isn't a perfect apples-to-apples comparison, but the comment rate right now is nine point seven. Yeah, your current rate is four point four cents. This isn't a perfect apples to apples comparison, but the comment rate right now is nine point seven cents. So it's.
And this is just for our public properties.
It's for public properties that make what common call make profits. So like this building right here is not here because that is franchise. So that means that the energy is free. So obviously we're good, but we can't be free. So it's all on the ones that you have to pay the bill for pretty much.
With your skin into the new building.
Yes. I can. Yes.
You are your father's son.
Oh, don't insult me like.
I, I, it's like seeing in a younger version, much older.
Well, thank you.
Even sound like.
Yeah.
Assisted next time because I have his laugh. That's not a good.
When I spoke to you on the phone, you didn't sound like.
That's right. That's right.
I'd be asking for a motion.
Somebody just presented.
We have motion by all the person over the second by all the woman solve for a resolution authorizing the participation in the northern Illinois municipal electric lab. Better known as NYMAC and authorizing the mayor or is designated to approve a contract with the lowest cost of electricity. Fighter for period up to thirty-six months. Questions or comments?
No, I just want to know how he get himself into this.
I enjoy it actually. So you know, it's a crazy, it's a crazy, not many people like talking about utilities, but I was a teacher, high school teacher in Chicago for ten years. So. This gives me a little bit more flexibility. I appreciate it. So I'm not. Back to the nine five.
Nice thing of following your dance steps.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, roll call please.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashay. Bobby Kozol.
Yes.
Ken O'Leary.
Yes.
And Marks P D.
Yes.
Martin Ferris, Resolution one-one-six-six.
Thank you.
Okay, Adam, thank you. Have a good night. That's all I have. Any questions to the city administration?
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Moving on to our Public Works Department, our Director of Public Works, Mark Sefer. Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item for you this evening. I'm looking for approval for pay request number one for Viseryn Construction. The direction has sent it to the I P A for approval in your person. Excuse me, is Viseryn's first pay request for one million, one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, nine hundred. One-one-three-five-nine-nine-two-and-sixty cents. We will then submit pay request to the I P A. Once we receive that check, we will then cut the check for misery. So we will not expend any funds. This is also in the list of bills for you this evening.
So we'll just present them.
Second. A motion by all the person over the second by Alderman Dyke for the approval of. Pay request number one from Viseryn Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I P A for approval from the submersment. Questions or comments? Roll call.
John Rashay.
Yes.
Bobby Kozol.
Yes.
Ken O'Leary.
Yes.
Marks P D.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Martin Ferris. Thank you.
That's all I have for public works. I mean, we have any answering questions? Any questions, Mark?
Yeah. Did you call that fellow last week that I told you about?
I, I talked to Maura, who reached out to him. She wanted Maura's better contact with them. So she's the direct contact. She had a conversation with him that day.
But I've seen him today. He said, I never got a call from you.
He, Maura, Maura's his direct contact with the city since she's working on development. She's been having all the conversations. So all the conversations go through her. Anything about development or anything like that, I let Maura handle since she's our person. If she wants to bring on the rest of us in, that's how it works. We let the one point person run the project and then. Right like that.
Okay, but somebody should call people. If you can't make it, but somebody else is going to do the job, you should call that person anyways. You're looking. I'm not handling, this person is going to handle for you so they know. The guy waited a whole week for you to call him and nobody ever calls, nobody called him yet. That's not good. That's not good.
This was, you were going to sit.
It's actually like a bunch of slops. We don't care what the heck happens to people, you know?
Well, this was going to call him that day because I was sure what you call him. So if.
Okay, that wasn't really real thrilled, I'll tell you.
Hey, thanks, Mark. A city engineer, are you handling this one too?
Yes, I'm looking.
Handling Ron's absence. Okay.
Engineer Weaver's asked. Absent. I'm looking for approval of a contract with Christopher Burke Engineering to do design engineering services. On the water main and roadway for Park Rose from Gaylord to Sweet Fire. This was presented at the January twenty-third workshop. It is a cost of ninety or seventy, seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. We do anticipate thirty-two thousand to be out this fiscal year, which we do have the funding and the rest will be budgeted for next year.
Second.
A motion by our first noble and second by our resolve for the pool. Car gross from Gaylord to Sweet Fire Street, water main replacement and roadway rehabilitation project, design engineering. Engineering services in the amount of seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashay.
Yes.
Bobby Kozol.
Yes.
Ken O'Leary.
Yes.
Marks P D.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Martin Ferris. Thank you.
I know Ron should be back from the office tomorrow. You can reach out to him if any questions you may have, or if there's anything I can try. Well, the right can.
Well, I just want to like dish on something that was discussed with Ron today. The request that I asked for less city council meeting, and that's just for the record about the light. At Willow Falls. After Ron did some homework investigation. So COM Ed will charge us twenty-five to twenty-five thousand dollars to put a light bulb. And the question that we have, Mr. Attorney, is. What is the liability if a light is requested by by residents and the city choose not to install because. Not only that it's going to cost twenty-five thousand dollars up to, it's not more. We also have to pay for the cost of the electricity on there as well. Because COM Ed will not do it. And the concern that I have is like, are we opening a kind of one, like what kind of budget we have? Do we put one light here and then there is another resident that's going to want another light on the entrance and that just it is dark. But what do we stand as a city at this point? Do we need to?
You said liability, you mean.
Liability if an accident happened, does the city is liable for that? Or do we need, does the city needs to. To come up with a policy that will provide guidelines for installations?
My initial thought would be that. There would be a host of tort immunity act communities for which the city would be immune from lawsuits for certain claim. I have to. Do a little bit more thinking. My initial thought is you're not required to. Put up a light every time someone requests it, or if it presents a. Potential danger. Can't do everything that every person asks.
We're going to need to do a policy just to.
Well, again, I don't know whether it would be. A bad thing to have a policy, but I guess the. What would the policy be? The policy would be. You know, you have to meet certain criteria and then the question is whether your criteria are adequate or not. So I don't know that necessarily the policy is the best. Have to look at the actual tort immunity act provisions, but again, my gut feeling is that, again, the city is immune from enforcing the laws from. Not having an ordinance or putting up an ordinance. If you're. If you do a full inspection, there are, there are Illinois tort immunity act provisions for almost all of those situations. Now, some of them carve out exceptions for negligence. So I have to look to make sure that. It's an absolute immunity versus a partial immunity. But my, again. My initial reaction is that there would be very little liability for the city.
By which I thought.
And if you want to give me a little bit more info on this particular intersection, and I can do a little bit more digging on it. Thank you a lot. Make sure this is not something that I'm missing.
Okay, thanks, Mark. We have nothing under community development, police department, our deputy chief. Brian Dachik, you said, see, right?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any agenda items for tonight. I do have some good news that I'd like to report to the mayor and council. I recently had the privilege to attend the law enforcement torch run conference for Special Olympics Illinois. And this was in Bloomington, Illinois, and it celebrated the athletes in the Special Olympics and then also recognized a lot of the departments statewide. For their fundraising efforts throughout the year. This past year, twenty twenty-two, the Crestle Police Department participated in a number. Fundraising efforts for Special Olympics. That was the polar plunge. We participated in the first ever, first time we participated in the plane pull at Lewis University. We did the torch run this year. Our Seifer joined us this past year for the torch run, did a good job. And we also did the cop on the rooftop. And we did our custom no shave fundraiser on that we also raised funds. So I'm proud to announce that our previous. High total for fundraising was fifty-nine hundred dollars and this past year in twenty twenty-two, we have a plaque here where we. Proud to say that we raised ten thousand six hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents for Special Olympics this past year. And you know, obviously there's a lot of people to thank. Our crime prevention officer outlaw, she did a tremendous job of organizing some new fundraisers this year, of course, Chief Clark. And some of his coordinating efforts, but we also had tremendous participation from. Mayor, the council, elected officials, city employees and members of our department that, you know, that number wouldn't have been as well if we wouldn't have had that kind of. Joint partnership. And certainly, we want to thank the residents too for all their generosity. For some of these various fundraisers. So again, I just want to. Share that good news. We'll be displaying this plaque proudly at our records window along with this other one. And that's all I have. We have our. Polar plunges coming up in a few weeks. You could contact myself or Officer Outlaw if you'd like to be a part of that. One of the things too that I have is we've got some T-shirts that are for sale. So this is the T-shirts this year. Kind of the army green and they're going for twenty dollars. We have hats for fifteen dollars and they're available Monday through Friday if you'd like to come in and. Get that, all that money goes to Special Olympics. So that's all I have. You have any answer, any questions that are in?
I'll get one for the dude.
Any questions?
Well, I want to thank you guys because it's a lot of. Lot of hard work and dedication and your part doing this and using your free time for such a good cause and I, I. Have always supported our police department. With everything we do. Externally and internally, and I will continue to do that. So great job to all of you.
Anybody else?
Thank you for everything you do. I did great with the donut, the coffee, the donut this year. So.
You were?
Yes, I did.
Oh, my God.
I was out there waiting and. This Rashay was making an amazing time. No, thank you for everything. Like you said, it's a team effort. It's everybody, every dollar, every penny it helps. So we continue also supporting each other. Will be amazing. Thank you.
Congratulations. Well, that was a big job. Sure.
Thanks to you and all the officers for what they do for Special Olympics is a good cause and thanks for all the time that you guys put forth. Thanks, Ken. I got fifty bucks if you can get Mark to run it again.
Oh, Mark, come on.
I will say this for, for Mr. Sefer, he is, he's losing weight and I think he's going to have no problem doing that he got this year. So. He is true.
You enjoy her?
Actually, I already told them.
Because if I had to double it.
Sorry, entering the reason. Polar plunge.
Congratulations, Ryan, to all the members of our police department, ladies, gentlemen, all the non swarm personnel also. And all our employees here, because I know there's a lot of work that goes into that. It goes to a great cause with the Special Olympics and I last. Number one fundraiser for all the police departments throughout the state of Illinois. It's the award and more than double of what you made in the past. That's quite an accomplishment. I, I know that you guys. Ladies have been into a lot of the different fundraisers within Special Olympics throughout the year. So I give you a lot of credit for that too. So congratulations to everybody.
Anyway, this summer, it showed how enthused the men in that department out. They were out there. It was almost a hundred degree weather. They ran state police headquarters for this building. And that was a lot, that was a lot of nerve to do that one in that kind of temperatures out there. And you should be congratulated to do that. Shows that they're really enthused and helping somebody out.
I have to say that I participated in the playing ball this year and oh my God, it was so much fun and looking forward to doing it again this year.
So what did you did? Thankful.
Oh.
Probably going to get a bigger earth play. You have seven forty-seven.
Change my journey.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. Moving on to the mayor's report. The agenda item for this evening is to prove the appointment of the finance director to the office in position of budget officer. Just for a little history here, two weeks ago at the February sixth city council meeting, the city council approved adopting. The budget system and an ordinance creating the office in the position of budget officer for the city of Crest Hill going forward. So with that, I would like to. Make the appointment of our finance director, Lisa Vanavitz, to the office in position of budget officer for the city of Crest Hill, and I would ask for your concurrence.
Seven second.
We have a motion by. Other woman is all second by other person overland for the appointment of Lisa Vanavitz to the office in position of budget officer for the city of Crest Hill. Questions or comments? Roll call please.
Marks P D.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashay.
Yeah.
Bobby Kozol.
Yes.
And Ken O'Leary.
Yes.
Martin Ferris. Thank you.
I can't think of that one second.
Lisa, I want to say I know you're going to do an. Awesome job because you had so far, you've been most impressive in your role here. You've done a fabulous job of finding and saving money for the citizens of this city. I know you're going to continue that and I want to thank.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you all for your support.
Okay, congratulations, Lisa.
Thank you.
I just did that.
Okay, the other thing is the veterans and police memorial committee would like to have a meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth. That is actually a week from tonight. At eleven o'clock in the morning here in city council chambers. And this will be to get started. For the rededication of our new police and veterans memorial, which is now located, has been. Moved to the new city hall and that will be. On Memorial Day this year, it'll be at new city hall. For our rededication of the memorial garden. So we'd like to get started on putting the program together. So that again, it'll be next Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, eleven A M. Here in the city council chambers of this building. With that, I would ask if there are any questions for the mayor. There are none. We will move on to our city clerk's report. Christine Rashad.
Thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Questions of the city clerk? All right. Thanks, Chris. City treasurer's report, our treasurer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item we have is seek your approval on adopting the fifty percentile proposed salary range from the. W H R compensation study and adopt the proposed open range merit plan. That's presented two weeks ago. So I seek motion, have a gun.
Don't move just presented.
Second. We have a motion by other person over the second by our man Dyke. To adopt the fiftieth percentile proposed salary range from the W H R compensation study and adopt and propose open range merit link. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Bobby Kozol.
Yes.
Ken O'Leary.
Yes.
Marks P D.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashay.
Yes.
Martin Ferris. Thank you.
Next up, I seek your approval on a list of bills through February twenty-first of two thousand twenty-three. Total on that is two million, three hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixteen cents.
Someone just presented.
Second. We have motion by other person overland, seconded by all the state for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
John Rashay. Bobby Kozol.
Yes.
Ken O'Leary.
Yes.
Marks P D.
Yes.
Martin. Martin Ferris?
Thank you.
That's just information that I get on my page and and this doesn't require action, just can report the regular overtime table from January thirtieth, two thousand twenty three to February twelfth of two thousand twenty three. Totally two hundred and forty one thousand, three hundred and seventy nine dollars and twenty three cents. There's a detail in your in your board packet. That's all I have, other than to thank you Lisa for and Jim for working towards that budget officer that's gonna work well for the city. Transparency will be the same, however, it'll make the job a little bit easier on the department heads and it's a good thing for it. So I thank you, thanks for supporting me. That's all I have this evening.
Questions of city treasurer?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, good night.
Thanks, Mike.
I have a question regarding the the salary proposed budget, what are we planning on needing for that? For some of the departments, public staff that qualifies for a higher increase?
What would you like to make?
I mean, as a council, we're gonna make a decision. I, I'm gonna like from the process, basically, I'm asking, are you gonna do like evaluation first, or, cause we know like some people, they haven't got a raise for a long time, which they they deserve and they do fall in that bracket, and they are on the lowest of the bracket, and I'm talking to some people that they do need to be considered something that we need to add on it very quickly, so I'm not sure how the process is, I'm just asking about it.
I'll have to look at the policy, because I'm not mayor of the policy, so it'll be a matter of following through, like you says, doing the reviews, making recommendations on their compensation, and based on the compensation plan, as you indicated, some positions should be at a higher
Correct.
Compensation within that range. If I could recommend an appropriate range, you have compensation in that range, and kind of the council considers that.
Yeah, well, just like some, cause some people have been very patient. I'm not gonna say names, you will, I think we all will spend very patient and the last thing that I wanna see is losing people, cause we're not doing what we need to do. I will appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, unfinished business, we have nothing, anybody? New business? Many layers on reports, anybody?
I did hear from Mr. John Prinsel about the annual Ladis memorial program, which will be on Sunday, June eleventh, eleven a.m. at the Ladis Memorial Garden.
Okay, city council comments, positive city council comments, anything you'd like to share with constituents? Who are you in the board for this evening? Nothing there. Father man, pity?
Nothing that I hear, all the person overland.
Well, I want to say congratulations again to our business that was here, Captain Mary's doing so well. That's a great thing for the city, and kudos again to the police and everybody in your department for all your hard work and dedication, and Lisa, for your new appointment.
Other woman, the dog?
I just wanna touch on what you said earlier, Liam. About what's happening in Turkey, it's weird back here. As some of you know, I have family in both countries, but most of it is, so yeah, I don't know nothing about my dad yet. I know my sister lost her home, I know family members that have been living on the streets. I just want to take a moment and realize how blessed we are in this country. And I'm personally thankful to God for bringing me here, for having me here. And I know they say, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger. And I know I'm not supposed to question him. But how much more these people can take, it sprays my heart to see so many like things I think, and just let's reflect on what we have here today and and be thankful. And like holding on, we'll be strong right now, it's been very tough to pretend everything's okay when it's not. No, that's on me.
All the member shake?
I don't know the addition.
All the man Dyke?
I don't have time to say it, what's ready to say?
Public comment, anyone like to address the city council, please step to the podium, state your name for the record, caress is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Your city attorney, Mike Stitt, is there a need for an executive session, Mike?
There's not.
Move to the jury here. We have a motion by all the Dyke, seconded by all the Rashay, for an insurance man. Roll call, please.
Ken O'Leary?
Yeah.
Marks the PD?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rashay?
Yes.
Bobby Thor? Bobby, yes. Martin Ferris?
Thank you.
All right, we need to adjourn at seven fifty six p.m.